Calling meeting to order at 4:30. Roll call, please.
Trustee Crane.
Here.
Trustee Wigan.
Here.
Trustier Soylu.
Here.
Trustee Bartow.
Here.
Trustee Murphy. Trustee Pearson.
Here.
Trustee Anderson. Dr. Smith.
Here.
All right. Number two, adoption of the agenda and staff is recommending that we pull for A under closed session, which is Student Records Challenge pursuant to Education Code Section 49070C. And so that will be removed. Can we have a motion to approve as stated?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Trustee Wigan moved it and was it Ersoylu seconded? Roll call, please.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Trustier Soylu.
Yes.
Trustee Bartow.
Yes.
Trustee Murphy. Trustee Pearson.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
The motion passes five to absent. Do we have any community input on closed session items? Seeing as none, we will now move to closed session. The items are B, student discipline; C, conference with legal workers' compensation; D, conference with legal workers' compensation; E, public employee discipline dismissal release employment; number 2024-05-HR; F, public employee discipline dismissal release employment; and G, conference with labor negotiator. And we will return to open session at 6:00 PM. Thank you. Okay, call to order, 6:02. Welcome, everyone. We will have a moment of, oh, sorry. First, in closed session, the agenda was for the closed session of the board meeting should reflect the following: Public employee discipline dismissal release employment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957. In closed session, the Board of Education took action to approve the resignation agreement and general release, number 2024-05-HR. The roll call vote was unanimous, seven yays and no noes. And that's that. And now we will go on to opening ceremonies with a moment of reflection and the pledge of allegiance led by Trustee Wigan.
Right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Adoption of the minutes. Do I have a motion to adopt the minutes?
So moved. Second.
All right, Trustee Wigan moved it and Trustier Soylu seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Trustier Soylu.
Yes.
Trustee Bartow.
Yes.
Trustee Murphy.
Yes.
Trustee Pearson.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. We now move on to student board member reports. Trustee Wigan.
Yes, today the topic is what role do students feel they can play in fostering stronger connections between schools and the broader community? Also, please provide two campus highlights. And Audrey, I'm going to have you go first from Early College High School.
Hello and good evening Superintendent Smith, President Crane, Vice President Wigan, and other esteemed board members. My name is Audrey Winhu and I am excited to represent my school's student voice and report on everything we've accomplished so far. After talking with several students from various grade levels, I've gathered that students play a vital role in fostering connections between schools and the broader community, both individually and collectively. Particularly due to ECHS's small size, many students branch out to other schools, building and maintaining relationships with their peers in the district. These small connections enhance their personal networks and serve as a bridge that links our school to the wider community. Having these inner-school friendships allows students to share experiences and perspectives, promoting inclusivity and collaboration among students from various backgrounds. ECHS also empowers students to be involved in the broader community, such as with our beach cleanup this past Saturday with the Surf Rider Foundation, which reinforces the importance of both connection and social responsibility. Ultimately, students have the potential to create a more interconnected and vibrant community where collaboration and mutual support thrive. On that note, although I briefly mentioned one of our many activities from the last few weeks, I'll dive into two especially notable weeks during the month of November. During the first week of the month, my ASV hosted a Fall Spirit Week culminating in one of our favorite house competitions of the school year, Kajabi Can Can. For those that don't know, ECHS has four houses that students are split into. And every month, we organize a school-wide activity to foster school spirit and camaraderie. This month's event, Kajabi Can Can, involves students attempting to tug their peers into a trash can, a hilarious, entertaining, and very safe spectacle for both students, participants, and spectators alike. Throughout the week, students showcased their creativity by dressing up in unique themes that celebrated culture, silly socks, and beloved movie characters. Lunchtime activities included games like Pictionary and Human Hungry Hungry Hippos, adding to the festive atmosphere. Following our Fall Spirit Week, we transitioned into Kindness Week, which emphasized the importance of caring for ourselves and others. Throughout this week, we celebrated kindness in various forms culminating in a special Friday event hosted by the organization Let's Be Kind. They brought a bouncy slide, flowers, and fun activities for our campus, creating an uplifting environment that encouraged everyone to spread positivity and compassion. These two weeks not only highlighted our school's spirit, but also reinforced the values of community and kindness within ECHS. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, Brianna Garcia from Newport Harbor High School.
Hi and good evening Superintendent Smith, President Crane, and esteemed board members. At Newport Harbor, we offer many opportunities for students to build strong connections between schools and the community. For example, this past Saturday, our culinary students and many others volunteered at the Costa Mesa Soup Kitchen. They were there from 7:30 in the morning until 12:30, serving food to those who attended. This allowed students to give back to the community in a positive way. Similarly, many clubs on campus have also hosted their own events to build connections with the community. Our Surf Rider Club hosts frequent beach cleanups to help clean our local beaches, and our National Honor Society just hosted a blood drive where many students, parents, and community members were able to donate to the Red Cross Blood Organization. Overall, students at Harbor are always encouraged to participate in any of these events that give back and help them create a stronger community. Another way Harbor tries building connections with the community is through programs such as the Junior Mentorship Program. This program pairs over 100 students in their junior year with a mentor who would teach them about their professional career and the opportunity to get involved in their workplace. As someone who did this program last year, I believe that is a very strong way to form bonds and connect with new people in our community. Furthermore, communication between the school, students, and the community are very important in creating connections. Our website keeps the community informed on daily events along with ASV's efforts through our student-run Instagram account. We value having a strong connection, whether that be with clubs, communication, or our programs. Moving on to our two highlights, it's always very hard to pick just two things with everything going on, but this meeting, I'd also like to talk about our Kindness Week that we had at Harbor. In the beginning of the week, students were welcomed with a poster wall that said "Leave Kindness Everywhere" and a tree with individual leaves that had the names of every student along with a different poster wall, which had sayings like "Be Kind," "Sailors Are Sweet," and "Have a Great Day." Throughout the week, ASV and Link Crew also hosted multiple events such as making friendship bracelets or writing kindness grams. Our school's second highlight is the Boys Water Polo CIF final game. Although it was about an hour drive, our student section, the Tarpet, did not disappoint, and neither did the team, as they had a close 12-11 win over Jay Sarah, winning the opening division CIF championship and having an undefeated season of 32 and 0. It was a super fun environment to be in as we supported some of our sailor athletes. With the first semester coming to an end, we are excited to see what will happen in these next final weeks along with bringing this good energy into the second semester. Thank you.
Great, thank you. It's great to see our schools doing so much with the community.
Okay, we now move on to CSCE report with President Amy Ching.
Hi, everybody. Good evening, President Crane, trustees, Superintendent Smith, Cabinet, and guests. Last month, I spoke about professional development for paraeducators, specifically CSCE Conference in March. Tonight, I want to continue to highlight the need for meaningful professional development for classified employees. Traditionally, November 1st was a district-wide day of development, which included classified employees. For years, the district provided classes for employees to attend at one of the secondary schools. There was a wide variety of classes, including CPR training and interpersonal communication skills. In addition to the training, there was the opportunity for employees to come together from different sites and build community. As with many things, this day has gone by the wayside. This year, training was offered to some classified employees, but not all were given the opportunity, and I have received varied feedback as to its meaningfulness and impact. Board policies which are attached to tonight's agenda refer to professional development six times. Policy 4040, Employee Use of Technology, states, "As needed, employees shall receive professional development in appropriate use of these resources." Policy 4113, Assignment, refers to certificated staff. Policy 4116, Probationary Permanent Status, refers to certificated staff. Policy 4131, Staff Development, refers to certificated staff. Policy 4331, Staff Development, refers to administrative and supervisory personnel, and professional development is referred to twice. The only policy that includes, or the only policy that I could find, that includes professional development for classified staff is specifically for the use of technology. There is no policy specifically for classified stating staff development. Board Policy 4222, Teachers, Aides, and Paraprofessionals. This says, "The Board of Education recognizes that paraprofessionals support student learning by providing valuable assistance to certificated staff, enabling greater individualized instruction and supervision of students." That says to me that you support us. So what I ask is that classified staff are a vital part of student successes, and I ask that we receive the same consideration for professional development as others in doing the good work to support students, staff, and the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Now we move on to NMFT Representative Tamara Fairbanks.
Good evening, President Crane, fellow trustees, Superintendent Smith, Cabinet, and honored guests. On November 1st, we celebrated and honored our Teachers of the Year for all of Orange County. And we also honored our Teachers of the Year for our school district, Kristen Piraton and Jen Yenney. And throughout the night, we had many inspirational stories, vignettes, just and 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 just to tell you just some of these stories and what did it and the things and the impact these teachers have made throughout just not only this year, but just throughout their entire careers. It there wasn't a, I mean, I cried the entire night just listening to all of these stories and the impact and the love that was involved in the work of all of these teachers throughout all of Orange County. And so it was a very, very special night. I thank trustees Pearson and Wigan for attending and joining us for this special event. Is they our honorees truly felt honored by your presence in attending the program. We also want to thank, and I also want to thank our NMFT members who helped observe, adjudicate, interview teachers, and just did all of the legwork in order to make this Teacher of the Year program a success. And one of the things that I do love is that this is a labor of love for Newport Mesa Federation of Teachers. So this is one of the things that we really take pride in, in developing and doing. And we just thank and we're just grateful for that type of support in our membership in order to honor each other and to lift each other up, because that's something that we need throughout throughout everywhere, is to lift each other up in everything that we do. So thank you.
Thank you. Now we move on to community input on non-agendized items. Trustier Soylu, please, can you read the statement?
This is an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items not on the regular meeting agenda. Comments on non-agenda topics are limited to three minutes per comment, up to 20 minutes per topic. A speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another person. By order of the Brown Act, Section 54954.2, the board will take no action or have any discussion on non-agendized items. The superintendent may provide clarification during superintendent's comments.
Okay, we have two speakers. Eddie Garcia, you can go first, and then we have Dina LeWolyn.
Good evening Superintendent Smith and board members and community. My name is Eddie Garcia. I'm the General Manager for Think Together that operates your after-school program at Pollerino Elementary School. So good evening, everybody. I'd like to just kind of highlight and give an update on a couple of things that that we're doing. On October 30th, we have a wonderful event that was at Pollerino that a lot of our students participate in a variety of wonderful activities to highlight the after-school programs during Lights On After School. And Lights On After School is a national event that showcases after-school and summer learning programs that support students and families. So it was a wonderful event that our students participated in. We even had Assemblywoman Cotty Petrie Norris's offices, who recognized the school and also the principal for their wonderful work that we're doing or they're doing, we're all doing, for the students at Newport Mesa and also Pollerino Unified School, Pollerino Elementary School. Recently, I also reported that Shalimar Center is unfortunately closing, and so we're still on track with doing that as of just late December. And so, you know, changing the odds for kids is our motto here at Think Together, within Think Together. And that's why we enjoy that partnership that we have with you to really help students achieve and thrive. And so that's why we continue to work hard and in partnership with you, the school, and and also our program in Shalimar, to transition our students into after-school programs within the schools. And so we have about 66 students currently on our list that we're really working with to just, you know, eliminate some of those barriers that are preventing them from participating in some of our schools. So we have wonderful, you have wonderful programs at your school sites, and we want to just get them into some of those schools. So we continue doing that work. As far as Lights On After School, there's one thing that I did have was a nice, wonderful video that I will be emailing you. The event happened a few weeks ago, so we're just getting some clearance on getting that video over to you. So thank you. I just wanted to bring you a couple of those updates. So have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Dina, if you want to step up. And then Elizabeth Riley would be after that.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Dina Lu Allen, and I am a Newport Harbor High mom and a founding member of Mothers Against Media Addiction, or MAMA, in Newport Mesa. 2007 was one of the best years of my life. My firstborn son, now a senior at Harbor High, was born. I also got my first iPhone. I thought it was magic. But I heard a rumor that Steve Jobs wouldn't allow his children to have this product that he so famously created. When my own children became toddlers, I noticed how sticky the phone was for them. And as they grew, I became an expert at iPad and then iPhone controls, but they constantly out-hacked me, and they still do to this day. I started to have major concerns about how technology would impact their development in their lives to come. In 2015, our founder, Julie Skelfo, a mother of three boys, was writing for the New York Times about the increase in suicide rates for teens. She started to have more and more dire concerns about how tech was impacting our youth as the years passed. She became an advocate, and in March of this year, she formed MAMA. MAMA is a national grassroots organization of parents, educators, and other advocates fighting back against media addiction and creating a world where real-life experiences and interactions remain at the heart of a healthy childhood. Our mission is aligned with Jonathan Haidt and his groundbreaking bestseller, The Anxious Generation. We currently have 27 chapters in 16 states. We have three areas of focus: advocating for safeguards, providing parent education, and the phone-free school movement. Phone-free schools, thank God. Thankfully, this work is happening very swiftly across the country, but there is more work to do. We are advocating for safeguards at the national state levels and to the tech companies themselves. As an example, we have a phonecalling campaign, a lobby to the U.S. House of Representatives to pass the Kids Online Safety Act, COSA, which extends privacy protections to most teenagers and requires platforms to prevent bullying and sexual exploitation online. The U.S. Senate passed this 91 to 3 in July. This is a bipartisan issue, and we are a nonpartisan organization. We are holding parent education sessions across the country at all school levels. This is especially important to us at the elementary school level so that parents can make informed choices before introducing smartphones and social media into their children's lives. We are very excited to have kicked off our chapter in the Newport Mesa area, and we are here to be a resource to the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have handouts, can I leave them?
Thank you. Elizabeth Riley.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Riley, and I am a board member of the Newport Harbor High School Theater Club and the Music Department. And I'm also a local taxpayer. Right now, we're not getting the funds from Prop 28 to pay for coaching and other things that I think everyone in this room has paid for. The funds, and my understanding is the funds, if they're not used within three years, we won't be able to use them. And I believe it's about a total anywhere from $80,000 to $100,000. And other districts, other districts are getting the money. There's a whoever is in charge of interpreting the proposition, they're reading it in a way where our kids aren't able to use it for coaching and other. So that leaves us to fundraise, which we're not able to. We had a competition this last weekend, and compared to last year, all this, you could definitely tell who has had the resources with the Prop 28 money. So I would just like some clarification and more information of when we can receive the funds or what else. I know that the theater teacher and the band coach has been working on this, but I just don't know how else, I don't know why all the other school districts are able to have access to these funds. So that's it, thank you.
Thank you. We move on to superintendent's comments.
Well, once again, I thank our partners at Think Together for all the all the hard work there at Pollerino and the work for years you've done at Shalimar. In fact, I'm going to be at Shalimar one of these evenings to kind of celebrate what's happened there. And just know that our team is as committed as you are to making sure that those students that are being displaced find a home in our ELOP programs. So that's a priority for us. We know it's a priority for you. So again, continued thank you for all the all the work you do. And I look forward to being at Shalimar myself and checking all that out. With regard to MAMA, you have a very, very supportive audience here. In fact, while LAUSD gets all the press, which is fine, let them have it, this board more than a year ago made that decision on behalf of our students, even before Jonathan Haidt came to this community and shared his his work that that we also find groundbreaking. This board realized that they had to do something to improve student engagement and the mental health concerns associated with an addiction to media in general. And so just kudos to this group for really being one of the first districts in California to to make that decision. I have a student advisory committee that I meet with, and I'm going to say something. I'm not going to name the student, because there are probably some folks in the audience tonight for those civics points that are saying, "I want to find that person and tell them my opinion." But the student said to me, "You know what we need to do in our schools? We need to look at screens less and look at books and pages and write more." So it's not just our parents who are concerned. It's a lot of our students that are concerned, and what they recognize is an addiction that does impact, impact, or does it back, rather, impact their mental health and their engagement. So absolutely, good luck, good luck with that work. And then with regard to Prop 28, in fact, the the funds have been going to all the sites here in Newport Mesa. We actually self-funded Prop 28 before we got the state's funding. So what I'll do is I'll have my team reach out to the speaker so they can explain how those dollars come. We we get them the same way other districts get them. The the proposition was written in such a way that it does make it hard, but our our folks and our arts commission and our advisory bodies came together and figured out a plan that is comprehensive, that that uses those funds appropriately, but also uses other funds we have in the district to make sure that our students get what I believe are some of the best opportunities to learn in the arts in any other district in the state of California. So we'll do something to clarify that, because we're proud of what we're doing, and we want to make sure that people understand what it is we're doing. And then, who knows, at some point, maybe the author, especially besides to run for office, may help us tweak that legislation so it's a little easier to fund some of these things in districts that would help save positions and programs and not just find new ways to spend new money. So but we'll we'll follow up for sure.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. We now move on to the report on achievement. Oh, community, we don't have any. Yeah, we don't have any. All right. We move on to Achievement, which is a report on ethnic studies. Ms. Torres.
Yes, good evening. Excuse me. Tonight, we have for you a presentation and report on ethnic studies. You may remember that our state of California passed legislation in July of 2021 for school districts in California to start looking at ethnic studies coursework to be part of the graduation requirements. And this board has decided that we wanted to ensure that we took our time and that we just we thought very intentionally about how we wanted to create this particular program. And so tonight, I welcome Dr. Mike Shaka, who is going to present to you our process and our progress and be able to share lots of great information with you. Dr. Shaka?
Thank you. President Crane, members of the board, Dr. Smith, executive cabinet, and guests, especially all these wonderful students we have joining us today. It's great to see you here. As Carrie Torres said, in 2021, California passed Assembly Bill 101, which requires school districts to incorporate a one-semester ethnic studies class into their graduation requirements. Beginning in the 25-26 school year, districts must begin offering the course, and the graduating class of 2030 must have completed a course as a graduation requirement. School districts can fulfill this requirement in any of the following four ways. So if you look at this slide right here, you can see the first way is to model the course based off of the model curriculum for the state of California. Second way is to use an existing ethnic studies course that a district may have already adopted. The third is to integrate the ethnic study standards into a pre-existing course such as World History, U.S. History. And the fourth, I'm sorry, the third, the fourth is to develop locally your own ethnic studies course. Under the direction of the board, Newport Mesa has opted to move forward with a fourth option and develop our own ethnic studies course using a process that involves significant input and feedback from our community, teachers, educational partners, and our students. Tonight, I would like to share with you both our process and progress in developing this course. So let's first start with the process. Who's been involved? We have a variety of different partners within the community and within our district that has been a part of this process. We have our community input team, which make which is made up of community members from all of our zones that have been recommended to us, working with the sites, that have showed eagerness and willingness to engage in this process. We've met multiple times over the last couple of years and have gotten some very valuable input. We have our curriculum development team, 1.0 and 2.0. 1.0 started almost two years ago and consisted of multiple teachers from all of our zones at every site that will teach this class. And we spent that time starting with big at every site that will teach this class, and we spent that time starting with big-picture themes, how we want to frame the class, and started to work through some of those details. More recently, we handed it over to our curriculum development team, 2.0, which consisted of one pilot teacher at each of our four comprehensive high schools that has further developed the course as well as take us through the pilot when that comes. We have our district leadership team, Carrie Torres, myself, Keith Carmona, and others to provide that district oversight and perspective throughout this process. And finally, we partner with the Orange County Department of Education. They have experience working through this with multiple districts and have been a good partner to help coach us and work with us through this process. What does the process look like? The best analogy I can give is kind of this accordion process. We get input and feedback from our community input team. We take that back to our curriculum team. They integrate that into different iterations and drafts, and then back and forth and back and forth we go, and we keep moving forward as we accordion back and forth through that feedback loop. Again, we partner with the Orange County Department of Ed to help us facilitate the process, as well as myself and other district administrators. We have principal involvement. So principals have been invited and participated in many of our curriculum team meetings, as well as our community input meetings. And then again, you're going to hear the word "feedback" a lot during this presentation because that's really what this process has been built on. It's been built on multiple iterations and getting feedback and continuing to develop and build the course that best fits our district. Current status? We're going to give an update to the board. Here we are. So check. And then we're going to continue to solicit more feedback as we continue to move through this process. So our timeline, you can see back in spring of 2023, that's when we first form our curriculum team and our community input team. In fall of '23, we periodically met with both teams, again, that accordion process. In spring of '24, we mostly focused on our curriculum team, and they really dug in to start to produce units, lessons, and assessments. Then in fall, which is where we are right now with 2024, we selected our four pilot teachers, handed the baton to them for curriculum development, re-engaged our community input team to give us some feedback on the current status, and were really set up to... You can see all of these wonderful blue checkmarks, and we're really in our final phase right now, which is spring 2025, which is our goal is to pilot our ethnic studies class. So the working title, and stay tuned for more on this, but the working title is Introduction to Ethnic Studies. It's a standalone G elective course, and we're writing the course for grades 9 through 12. Now, that doesn't mean that we'll necessarily keep it at 9 through 12. We may focus it on a certain grade level based off of the structure of each school, but right now, we're writing it more flexibly to be acceptable for 9th through 12th graders. It's going to be written under the History of Social Science, which means a History of Social Science credential teacher will teach this class. And it will be organized into the four required ethnic groups as required by AB 101: African-American, Asian-American, and Pacific Islanders, Latino-Americans, and Native Americans. So we talked about our timeline for the process. Now we have our roadmap for how we develop the actual course. We started with purpose. What is the purpose of AB 101? Spent some time with both teams talking about that, and then began big with this idea of identifying the outcomes. What do we want the students to understand and be able to do upon completion of this course? Then we backwards mapped and identified the big ideas and themes, designed and developed the curriculum, and now we're at step five, pilot and evaluate. Step six is launch. We're excited about that point as well as we move forward. So our next steps. We're going to proceed with the pilot in spring of 2025, and we're going to continue to gather feedback and make adjustments. It's very important to note that the draft of the class that we will start with will not be the draft that we end with. We're going to continue to solicit feedback from our pilot teachers, from our parents, from our community input team, and most importantly, from our students throughout this process. We're going to gather that feedback in a variety of ways. We have four pilot classes, so we're going to gather anecdotal evidence. We're going to get qualitative evidence. We're going to go talk with the kids because we're going to have formal surveys. It's one thing to read on a survey, "This class is awesome," which will be great to read, but it's another thing to have a conversation with the students about why and what was it, and how can we build on that and make it even better. And then we're going to propose a course outline to you for adoption in the late spring is our plan. So as great as it is to hear from me, I thought it'd be good to get a little bit of perspective from a member of our community input team and a member of our curriculum team. So I'd like to invite up Maggie and Jose to share their experience.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me, and I just want to talk a little bit about the process, how I was involved. I was asked by Principal Holt at Estancia to participate, and although I should have said no because I say yes too frequently, I said yes because I was curious. I wanted to know more about the requirement. And so we started meeting in 2023. We met here at the district. It was facilitated by Dr. Chaka and also Marika Manos from the Department of Education, Orange County Department of Education. I was really pleased to have a variety of people in the community input group. It wasn't just parents. There were outstanding students, community members, also people from a variety of backgrounds and experiences, and I would say feelings and beliefs. So I have to really commend Dr. Chaka and also Mrs. Manos for facilitating the group. It was really remarkable how well people were able to express themselves, especially in this kind of day and age where people are often very polarized. It was very encouraging and hopeful. So we met about three times consecutively to learn about the actual bill and to learn about the scope of the class and how the curriculum for Newport Mesa was going to be developed. And then we kind of went on hiatus for, I think it was about a year, so that the teachers could do the work of designing the curriculum. All throughout the process, we interacted a lot. It was very dynamic, and like Dr. Chaka said, we didn't ever feel like it was a done deal. It was over. It was kind of like this process that was going to be changing based on the input from all the parties. Then we met just recently to go over what had been developed, and so we got to look that over, kind of look at all of the ethnicities that were going to be studied and all of the different, you know, parts of those ethnicities and their contributions, their challenges. And then that wasn't really the end of it either, though. We were encouraged to respond to all of that information that we were given. Some of the highlights for me were learning about the law itself and learning about the guidelines that were used to develop the curriculum. But for me, honestly, the best part of the process was getting to know the parents, the other parents, the community members, the students. It was a really refreshing experience. So I would just feel like very confident about the process. Then one thing I was asked about was to talk about my perceived influence in the process, and I will say that not every group that I've participated in was... made me feel like there wasn't sort of a predetermined conclusion and that I did not have a lot of effect in the process, that they would, you know, have me come or have a group of people come to share my opinion, but it was really, it felt like, in essence, to kind of check a box to fulfill a requirement. And I'm happy to say that it did not feel that way at all. So I really enjoyed participating and hope to continue to participate in the process. I think it's a really important aspect for our students in our district. And I know that you will forgive me, but I have to leave now to go to a baseball board meeting.
Good evening, board members. My name is Jose Barajas. I am a social science teacher over at Newport Harbor High School. I also work on the dual-language team that we have over there, and I am the mock trial team teacher advisor. On top of that, I am alumni of Costa Mesa High School, and my mentor is from Cardinal Delmar High School, and I live two blocks away from Estancia High School growing up. So I have a lot of personal and professional connections to the district. More recently, and related to the topic of today, I've been on the curriculum team, and Mike gave it cool names. We didn't have those names. We had 1.0 and 2.0, and I was part of both those teams. The first round, we did 23 to 24 the school year. That's where we talked about big-picture things. We talked about possible themes, logistics, the importance of the law. We talked about all those things. And then around five times in person, but we were constantly emailing, texting, looking for professional development opportunities to kind of be well-rounded in the subject matter that we were going to talk about. And then in the 24-25 school year, so far, we've met around five times, but again, constant communication. And we've talked about specifics as far as lessons. After we identified the roadmap and the goals, we talked about lessons, activities, possible field trips, and more nitty-gritty, specific things that we want to achieve with this class going forward. So I'm really proud of the progress that we've made so far, and I think that even though it's not done, but we're in a good place right now where we can say, "Okay, this is what we want to put out," and then we'll make it even better. As far as the highlights for me, it's really, you know, important for me to be part of something that impacts the community that I'm from, so I'm proud to be part of this team. And not only that, I'm happy that we got different perspectives from different schools, different individuals, and that we were able to have these important conversations. We didn't agree on everything that was going to be put in the curriculum. We didn't agree on all the topics, but we had those conversations in a respectful way. So I'm super proud of the work that the teachers have been doing. My influence, as far as my influence goes for what we've been doing, I've been professional about it all, I believe. I think I've had the opportunity to express myself. I've let others express themselves, and with the direction of Mike Chaka and Marika Manos from the district, we've been, you know, doing a great job at that. I'm excited to pilot this. I know we have a lot of sailors in the room, so you have an open second period next semester. Go ahead and sign up for that class. And then next year, I'm going to be very happy with the result. I'm sure that we'll have a good product for you all, so thank you for your time.
Jose's incredible, and I think it mostly has to do with his 10th-grade business teacher. Yeah? Yeah? So I won't take all the credit. Thank you, Maggie and Jose. I really appreciate it. So wrapping it up, talking about feedback. Jose mentioned November 1st and a full day that we spent with the curriculum team, really sitting down and making some real progress with that. So out of that November 1st day, we are now at a point where we have eight to 10 lessons per ethnic group that we are continuing to polish, but it's a really good place. I think it started to build confidence in the teachers that next semester, we will have those lessons ready to go, and we'll have something to really move forward that will be of high quality with the students. And another piece of feedback that I think they gave to each other that they're working on incorporating is every opportunity possible to incorporate local stories. If there's a story that happened in Oklahoma, but also something similar happened in Southern California, let's incorporate the local story so the kids can better connect with our local area. So that's one of the areas of focus that that team's working on right now. Our community input team, as Maggie mentioned, met last week or the week before, something like that, and had some incredible feedback, first of which was, "We need to have an introductory unit that talks about the why. Why ethnic studies? Why is this class important? Why are we here?" Which is something that we just didn't have in our first version that was a big aha moment. And then on top of that, a story that kept coming out over and over is, "No matter how hard we try, we're not going to be able to include every single ethnic group in this class. It's just not going to be possible." So the idea came out of our community input team to include a student choice project that allowed them to pick a group that they wanted to pursue further and really explore, and so we really appreciated that idea and are working to incorporate that in as well. As I mentioned before, the course title, they are not impressed with Introduction to Ethnic Studies. So some more creative ideas like American kaleidoscope or American tapestry have started to be played around with. So we're getting very creative ideas. We'll see where that lands, but again, fantastic input from the team. And then to continue to amplify the contributions and impact of each group is something we're going to work to build in. So with that said, are there any questions?
Trustees? All right, we've got Pearson and then Barto.
Wow. That was fantastic. And I have to say, it makes me feel really good to hear the plan. I also talked to a community member that was part of this process earlier today, and she basically echoed exactly what Maggie had to say to everything that she had to say, which was fantastic. She wanted to thank us for including the parents and the community in this process. She wanted to thank you. She couldn't say what an incredible leader you have been and how wonderful it was to work with you. So thank you, and I love the idea of the student-led project at the end. I think that that is fantastic, too. Everything you presented was fantastic. My only question is, is how now are we going to train the teachers to present this curriculum in the same spirit that you have led this project? Because obviously, you've done such an amazing job. How can we get the teachers to present it in the same manner?
Yeah, I think we have some amazingly dynamic teachers, and so it's going to be working with them, professional development, bringing them up to speed. And I think you bring up an excellent point, is not assuming that they've gone on this journey with us, because it's been a long journey, but really making sure that we on-ramp them with all the same energy and focus and enthusiasm that's been created by this awesome team.
And trustee Barto and then Anderson?
I just want to echo Lisa in saying thank you. It sounds like you did it above and beyond of the process that we were hoping, you know, in our wildest dreams, what we hoped that process would look like. My only other question was, when will we be able to view kind of the curriculum as trustees or community members or things like that?
Yeah, we can...
So we were going to mention this in the end, but we're going to invite trustees in in small groups to come in and take a look at it and kind of dive in. We just wanted to do this first to make sure that we still had your blessing, and now we'll be calling folks in.
Thank you.
I just had, kind of following up on trustee Pearson's question about the pilot teachers, I was wondering about the selection process. Is it people who have studied this in the past? Are we saying, is there like a 2.0 of professional development? What can we hear more about kind of how the people were chosen for this?
Yeah, this 1.0, 2.0 thing is catching on. I'm going to go with it. So it was volunteer and site-selected process for this first pilot team. But going through the pilot team, it really, you know, we want people that are passionate about the class. We want people with the right credential, and we want people that are willing to go on a journey that's going to be multiple, you know, that's going to be organic, people that are going to be willing to adapt as we continue to get that feedback and continue to get more input.
And do you currently have, I saw the range tonight, do we have a teacher of the four, one of every grade level? Do we have one in every zone? What is the configuration?
For the pilot program? So for the pilot program, right now, we have one teacher at each of our four comprehensive schools. So that's who's going to pilot the class. We're also working on a slightly different pilot at Early College and Montevista, and then our Back Bay teacher was part of our curriculum team, and they're not part of the initial pilot because we're going to have to adapt the class to a quarter system class as opposed to a semester, so that's going to take us a little bit more time.
Trustee Soiler? Oh, sorry. Okay. Go ahead.
All levels, all grades?
It will be open to all grades. The pilot will be for students who are interested, so we're not limiting it to a specific grade for the pilot. The students of all levels will be able to sign up and take the pilot class.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Trustee Soiler and then trustee Wigan.
Yeah, thank you. This is really great. I echo what everyone said about the process being pretty solid. Can you speak a little more about the student choice project? Is that the classroom is going to choose an additional project, or is that each student is going to get to do a particular project that might be outside of those four core populations?
So that's a great question, and the feedback's just off the press, so we haven't digested it with the curriculum team, but the way I'm interpreting it is each student will have their own choice to explore an ethnicity of their choosing. It won't be a class project. It will be each student in some sort of self-exploration, but we have not teased that out yet. It was off-the-press feedback.
Okay.
Thank you.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes, thank you. It sounds like you guys have really thought through a lot of these things and put in a really great process in developing this curriculum. So the one thing that struck me is when you're talking about introductory unit, that why are we doing this work? And I think maybe, you know, some of the parents that, you know, their kids are going to take this class and wonder, "Well, why?" But obviously, it's a graduation requirement, but want to know, you know, what does it entail? So specifically, you know, the first year that it's offered, do you plan on doing any kind of, like, before they take it or, you know, something, some kind of class curriculum, you know, study session or something for the parents?
Yeah, so as we present tonight and, you know, provide information to you and get feed-
as we present tonight and, you know, provide information to you and get feedback, that's something that we're prepared to do. Um, and so we want to kind of take that in stages, uh, because this is going to be a new course, and I don't know that all the community knows, for example, that it's a graduation requirement. For some people, twenty-thirty is a long way away, so it's not necessarily on the horizon. Uh, but for those who will be in the class, who, the students who are going to self-select in, absolutely working on communication and being able to provide context for parents, we also envision a time where we would do that on a grander scale, right? As we get closer, we go through the pilot, spring comes, we're getting feedback. We imagine, um, where we would be able to do that on a larger scale so that we're better prepared when we launch in the fall. Right? So we want to make sure that our community is brought on board with that, but we have to start with our target group first, yes. And then we're going to require them to also give us feedback. So we're hopeful and very excited that we think that parents um, of students in this course for the pilot would also be able to provide us their authentic feedback, because we're hopeful that it has an impact on students and family together.
Great, thank you.
Trustee Anderson?
Thank you. I had one additional question that came to mind. Um, how are we communicating to students so they know that they can opt in and take this in the spring since we're almost at the end of the semester?
So that's my homework for tomorrow, is, is after this board presentation, uh, we'll be sharing a communication that sites will be, um, sharing with students as to the opportunity and the details.
Okay, great, thank you.
And, and we see principals Thursday, so we will have them in front of us, and so they're anxious. We have some principals who have been knocking on our door for two years. So they're very eager to support the process, so we'll get started on that right away.
I love that it's available to any grade level. That's wonderful. Thank you.
I, I have a couple of comments and questions. Um, I think that, I, I love the fact that we're doing it the Newport Mesa way. I keep using that now, because we do like, we do like to localize our, you know, a lot of our policies, because we need, we, we, we straddle quite a variety of demographics, et cetera, so I'm glad that we're doing our own. And I love that the process was thoughtful, intentional, and it included community members, and that the community members felt valued, because that's also very important. It's one of the board priorities is to engage the community, so thank you for that. And, um, I, I have a couple of questions. So the students who will be piloting this, this in the spring, two things. Have, is it going to be the same grade level at each of the high schools, or is that a side decision? And secondly, would these students hopefully get the A G credit, so they're kind of squared off for, for their graduation requirement?
So great questions of both. So for, for the student level, the way we're envisioning it is we're going to open it up to nine through twelve students for the pilot, and so they'll be able to, ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth grade. Um, and what we may find is, um, students of one grade level gravitate towards some of the concepts and themes a little bit differently than other grade levels, and that will be important feedback to get. So we'd like to open it up to nine, ten, eleven, twelve for the pilot, and then learn what, what we can from that experience. And in terms of the A to G, yes, absolutely, that's our, uh, what we're anticipating. The way the process works is, once we submit the course for board approval, then we can submit it for A to G, uh, credit, and it's retroactive.
So does it, does it then, um, supplant an A G social science course?
It would serve as a G, so it would supplant an elective requirement.
Okay, got it. And then can you speak a little bit to, uh, the resources and ancillary products that you'll be providing the teachers as far, since we don't have a textbook? Is it going to be packets, and then you're going to give them a wealth of resources for them to use? Um, what's it looking like?
Yeah, that, so we're still developing that, but there's a lot of standalone resources. So for, for example, original source documents. They'll read a passage from something, then they'll spend time analyzing that pass, uh, passage, but it's not going to be an adopted textbook. It's going to be individual, individual resources.
And our teachers are helping inform that process and helping create, uh, you know, a resource hub, um, for all the teachers who'll be teaching that.
Great. Um, and Dr. Smith, thank you for allowing the board, um, to take a look at, and a peek, because, um, actually, you know that we would be asking for that anyway. So anyway, we appreciate the fact that you read our minds, and we can't wait. Thanks. Alright, thank you very much. Alright, so we move on to informational items, item seventeen, which is to receive the final version of the four thousand series personnel. Dr. Smith?
Yeah, you, you've already seen these multiple times. In fact, the board had a first read and a second read of these and then adopted them, but CSBA has a policy there that they won't put them into gamut until the board sees them in their final version. And because the last edit had some strike-throughs and things like that, this is the final version. It's just an informational item, and it's really a process that the CSBA can, can load them into gamut for us. And if there's confusion, of course, and some trustees have brought this up, when you're talking about personnel, they have to have the same policy for different groups. So you might see something in a four thousand, a forty-one hundred, and a forty-two hundred, and they're identical, but they're four different employee groups. And so if the board ever wanted to look at, is there some way to, uh, like they said, you know, provide some clarification within the policy, if this is what it's for, then you certainly could take it. You have a policy edit committee, uh, policy creation committee, take it to them, bring it back to the board. So this has preclude you from this. Again, informational item only.
Trustee Anderson?
Thank you. Um, I guess one of our schools is out, is has, kids only need to stay till seven. So one of the questions that I had was about, um, just making sure that we are clear in the board policies to enumerate which section is which section. The thing that I noticed, um, in reading through this was there's, the forty-two hundred isn't called out specifically as classified personnel, whereas forty-one hundred for certificated and forty-three hundred for administrative is. So it kind of, it, it's not the same. Um, and I think that would be helpful just for clarity. And then I wanted to suggest that we discuss within our committee, policy four-one-one-five, which is evaluation and, well, for, um, certificated, it's four-one-one-five. For classified, it's four-two-one-five. It's for evaluation and supervision. And the last time that it was updated was two thousand fourteen. So, um, one of the things that I think this board is, um, really dedicated to is making sure that, teachers are able to show and have documentation of their work product and their teaching styles and what they've brought. And then also, there's a, there's a process in place and a regularity to when evaluations are happening. Um, and so there's a, the existing policy that's there that was last updated a decade ago has some good pieces to it, but there's also some things that are unclear that I just think, um, we would want to specialize them to our district to make them more clear. And perhaps then add an A R to it, so it's more clear for principals. That's all. Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. We move on to item eighteen, which is a consent calendar. Do I have a motion to, um, approve?
So moved.
A second? Trustee, okay, moved by trustee Wigan, seconded by trustee Pearson. A roll call, please.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Soylu?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes, and I had a question come.
Alright, um, motion, is it a question or comment? I'm just like, well, okay, well, the motion's approved. That's just that, and then now, comment or question?
Great. Um, on item eighteen C eight, which is classified supervisory and confidential salary schedules. Um, one of the things that came to mind, I was looking through that, um, particularly for the unclassified, they seem to be in kind of it like, an area where there's not a representative for them. It just got me thinking that some of the numbers are a couple of dollars below minimum wage. Some of them are under our current minimum wage, and no one is advocating for that, or maybe bringing it forward. Um, and I think particularly for tutors and walk-on coaches that we use with great regularity, it's important to hopefully be above minimum wage, but I don't even know the last time that those were addressed or thought about or brought forward. Um, and so I just wanted to maybe have a conversation about that at some point. And then also to, within that, I know that that was the agreement, um, for the bargaining units. But this, um, also California, this, the minimum wage updates on January first. And so I just wanted to make sure that we either put an asterisk or that's clear. So if someone is looking from outside our district, if they're applying, they're not like, I'm not going to take that job. That's not even minimum wage. Um, I think is an important thing to note.
I'd be happy to address that. Ms. Olson?
Excellent question. Um, I'll address first of all, the unclassified hourly salary schedule that is there. Some of those are updated because they are linked to our salary schedules, like, for example, the substitute bus drivers that are not represented, but their salary is linked to a regular bus driver. And so that's why you saw those are increases that are reflective of the seven percent that was awarded. The other unclassified positions that you see at sixteen, um, dollars, when, we will be coming back to increase so that we maintain those at minimum wage. So they are not forgotten. Um, it is certainly on our radar, and Kristen Clark's very good at reminding me that make sure that you were taking that forward. So it's already, actually, ready to go, to implement at that time for those unclassified positions. The other point that you make, I believe, is in reference to the classified bargaining unit hourly salary schedule, of which case you might notice that on range ten, step one, it is, um, just over sixteen dollars. So while it may sit there right now being minimum wage, um, come January, it wouldn't. The, the part for the board to know is, we do not have any positions that are below range sixteen. And so therefore, we are above it, um, given this salary schedule that is in front of you. So we do not have any positions that are below a range sixteen.
Great. And what is the process for unclassified? I would love to, to know more about that. I think one of the things for me that I was thinking through, because I hadn't, I didn't realize that before, it just occurred to me, was we have some schools who a coach is paid year-round, full-time salary, and that academic, that athletic program looks completely different to a school that has a walk-on coach that's making exactly minimum wage. So I just, if, when we're looking across the di- the district at some of those things, I mean, I don't know that someone would, would take that if they had to leave their actual job to come do coaching, and it's just at minimum wage, so I just.
Coaching is a very interesting aspect, because per the ed code, um, our athletic positions, our coaches, have to be offered to certificate our current, certificated staff. That is per ed code. And so as a result of that, our R and R schedule, um, and stipends within the contract are really what guide those salaries there. So it's connected. It was never intended to be an outside, single-standing position. Um, and so these unclassified positions, usually of walk-on coaches, are the assistant coaches and whatnot. There is provision for, if we do not have a certificated person who qualifies or is in, interested in a coaching position, we actually have a process that I can get to you, um, for it to be offered to our classified staff. Anybody outside the organization, though, then it would be default to, um, the stipends that are equitable to the R and R. So athletics is very complicated, because there's so many different layers and versions and varieties that come with it. So you actually have to almost look at each individual one to share the story with you of that. The other, um, unclassified positions, when it does come up, that, and I'll give you an example of that, um, the unclassified tutor. You'll notice it is not at the same level as some of the other unclassified. It is higher, and that was because it was brought forward. Let's review it. And so we looked at our, um, comparables around, um, our twelve unified school districts. We looked at it and came to an increase there. So whenever it's brought to our attention of what the position is, and that there is, that there is a sense that it's not at a level that it should be, then, um, we do an analysis, and then we would bring it forward to the board for approval.
Is that like every, thank you, that's helpful. Is that every year? Is that every five years?
It's really when it comes up. There are some of these that we don't use, for instance. We don't have people in those positions, so they're not looked at. And they're rarely do we advertise these unclassified positions, except the tutor.
The reason that I brought it up specifically was talking to the Estancia volleyball girls, of which I was one at one point, and we had a coach that changed every single year. One season, we had two different coaches, and the girls were telling me they had a similar experience. And so I think just for continuity, I, I would love to have a discussion. I don't know if we need board direction. I don't know what the next step is, but just having a system that benefits our students across the district in the same way, so they're having the same coaching experiences. And if the salary is something that's prohibitive for people taking that, I think it's important to address. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so, um, the motion passed. So we'll go to nineteen, which is discussion action calendar. Nineteen A is to approve certificate credential waiver for a certificated employee. Ms. Olson?
We bring this forward to you tonight. Um, please come forward every now and then when we have.
So sorry. My apologies. You couldn't hear me?
So, yes, we bring this forward to you tonight. We've done it in the past where we have a, one of our certificated employees that is in a certain situation that they need a waiver in order to perform part of their job. In this particular case, we have a very capable individual who is one of our C T E teachers working on their preliminary credential through O C D E, and so, and, um, when they complete that, they will have their E L authorization. But while they are going through the program, they do not have it, which is required, um, by ed code to have. So this waiver provides for that, allows him to continue to work as he's completing his credential.
Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Alright, we have a motion made by trustee Wigan and seconded by trustee Soylu. Roll, roll call vote?
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Soylu?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
The motion, motion passes. And we move on to resolution adoption calendar. Twenty A, which is adopt resolution seven eleven twenty-four, the Newport Mesa Unified School District authorize, authorization of signatures for the Orange County Department of Education. Mr. Trader?
This is a routine item, and it says simply updating the personnel who are authorized to, um, approve documents, including payroll, accounts payable, purchase orders, contracts, and travel reimbursements.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second? Alright. Moved by trustee Wigan, seconded by trustee Barto. Roll call.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Soylu?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yep.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Alright, motion passes. Mr. Trader, you're set. Um, we move on to informal reports with Dr. Smith.
Yes, so for three years, we've been very, very serious and intentional about building relationships with and working with our, um, our teammates and labor leaders. We've been a part of the California Labor Management Initiative for a couple of years. And most recently, we convened our Student Achievement Leadership Think Tank, um, which was awesome. A chance for representatives from each school to come together, those people doing the work, to help us collectively, uh, map a course, to be the best at everything we do. How do we improve outcomes for all students? How do we get the most out of, um, our amazing kiddos? And so really, really excited about that. We're going to continue that work. We know that we'll have opportunities as well, uh, to bring classified, uh, representatives together and to have conversations about similar kinds of conversations or issues, um, those that affect them. And I thought about what, uh, President Ching said tonight. Certainly, no greater investment than the investment in human capital and, and professional development. So, you know, conversation on how do we do that better? We're always wanting to get better, and if there's something we can do to make these opportunities, uh, more available and more effective at the same time, um, then we're all in. So we'll continue that commitment. Uh, last week I had a chance to speak at, uh, a state conference on a panel about governance during turbulent times. For those of you keeping track, that's about the sixth in the last three years where it's been a similar topic. But, but I just wanted to share that the audience really appreciated a lot of the work that you've been intentional about doing. For prospective candidates, bringing them in and, and sharing with them the, uh, priorities of the board, the protocols, a general understanding of what trustees do, so that as they campaign, as they run for this office, they know what they're getting into. That's something you started some time ago. The onboarding of new trustees, one of your priorities in recent years, was to make that a better onboarding. So you helped write different curriculum, different approaches, um, for that onboarding, a commitment to CSBA. So you helped write different curriculum, different approaches um for that onboarding, a commitment to CSBA, um to going and being trained, Masters in Governance, other opportunities. Um, and then a lot of work around the protocol, being clear about how you're gonna do the work. And even last year, I shared this with them, creating a protocol to discuss what happens when it's not going well. What, what do we do then? Let trustees don't get to that area, you get to that area. And so I just wanted to say, given this time of year, it's, it's an absolute joy uh and an honor for me to serve all of you. Uh, the work you're doing, other people that do this kind of work, wanna do it better, are learning from what you're doing and your commitments. I told them um that one of the things we keep in front of us all the time is that our students are watching. Uh, they certainly are, and I'm sure they like what they see and the seven of you, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Um, and now we move on to Board Member Reports. And um Trustee Wigan, and then we'll go down that way.
Thank you. Um, yes, this uh, it's been an interesting couple of weeks, uh to say the least. Um, but we're glad we're all here. Um, so uh, the last couple of weeks, I was an honor of being at the Teacher of the Year, and it was such um so inspiring, I think, as um Mrs. Fairbanks um talked about. It was, uh, there was ev- there were so many different um communic- uh, input from um various uh parents and um teachers that these other teachers have worked with and students about their teacher and how wonderful this teacher has and how they have impacted their life. And yeah, you just sat there with tears in your eyes. Um, being happy that you get to be a part, a little bit of, a little bit a part of how people um how these, how these wonderful teachers are helping our students. So that was wonderful to be at. Um, and then the other um more exciting, not more exciting, I don't think there's anything more exciting than Teacher of the Year, but another kind of thing, that was exciting, I have to say. It was exciting because I took my daughter to this. Um, C, the CIF Girls Flag Football Final, uh Newport Harbor versus Orange Lutheran. Um, that was, we, we came up short, uh Newport Harbor actually lost. But um it was just so great to see these um women awa- uh play and uh technically kind of a new sport. It was the first CIF Championship Final ever. Um, and then what was really awe-inspiring to me is that how um, you know, everyone in the stands were like, well, what are the rules? How, what, what's this? Was that a foul or is this a foul? And then you came away with it, and all the women were like, yeah, great, good job, girls. And then all the men, which I found interesting, were like, wow, I didn't know that they can run that play. That was a backhand round, blah, 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 blah. That was so exciting. And you're like, yeah, okay, they can. That was awesome. Like, it's no big deal. Yeah, so I mean, that was a, a really interesting and fun um, fun event to, to attend. Um, and that's all for now.
Yes, not much um to report, other than um on Sunday, I took my daughter to the um Newport Harbor. Basketball coach had a little clinic for the sixth to eighth grade girls. Um, I think it's really good. Here's my plug. All you coaches at the high schools, at all four of our high schools, can you do these like summer clinics and winter clinics to get the girls and the guys too, I guess, um the girls ready in sixth to eighth grade to come into your high school, ready to play whatever sport you are coaching? So I just thought that was really great of them to do, and I am excited that all of our sites do that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Um, our district has had so many wonderful sports successes. CIF Water Polo, I'm really proud of the guys for pulling that out again. Um, and lots of great things in regards to robotics. I think Newport Harbor Robotics Team uh made it further than they'd ever made it before, competing outside of the district. So that was a big thing for a nascent program that um a pathway is kind of being developed from Ensign through Harbor. So that's exciting for the, for the other sorts of sports, I guess. Um, and just, it's wonderful to see our students succeed. Um, and I just want to express all the gratitude for all of you and what wonderful professionals you are and how you always lead um with hearts for children and really put that first. And um I will miss you guys. I'll be bittersweet, but um look forward to serving in a different way and hopefully building that, that partnership.
More people can call me with things that are on. Yes, thank you, Michelle. We will miss you. Thank you for everything you've done to help Newport Mesa. Um, I actually, I guess probably the best part was the two CIF games, uh football games that were at Mustang Stadium um the last two Fridays. Uh, we came very close. We beat Temecula Prep. We killed them. It was amazing. I was like thirty-five, nothing or something. I forget, maybe thirty-five, seven. I think we let him get a touchdown. But um, but then um it all came to an end with San Gabriel. Um, so that sucked. But um, and then of course, uh Mayor Stevens was there at the, at the game um along with Supervisor Foley, and Mayor Stevens had gone to San Gabriel. So, you know, so then he was like not all that sad. And um, cause they, they did beat uh, did beat us. But the best part was how excited the Costa Mesa community was to have, to, to be able to host two CIF um football champion, or playoff games uh at Mustang Field, which they hadn't been able to do ever. And um, so I had fun sitting next to the, um, sitting on the sidelines with Jeff and talking to him about all the things we wanna do at Mesa with those exciting um stands and everything. He was enjoying every second of that conversation. And um, and showing him how great and excited the community is to be out there on Friday nights. Uh, as usual, thank you to uh everyone on your team, Jeff, and everyone over at uh Mesa with the play and uh the Fields over at Jack Hammond. It was another fun Friday night in Costa Mesa with flag football playoffs, play at Costa Mesa Theater, and then the CIF playoffs. So, again, if you ever wanna talk to anyone in Costa Mesa, probably a few Newport Beach folks, just come to Costa Mesa on a Friday night and stand on that corner. Meet everybody.
With your parka.
Yeah, with your parka. Don't forget your parka, though. I mean, it's like, I had my snow one on. Um, it's so cold. Uh, I also got to go to see Little Mermaid for Costa Mesa Middle School. That was fantastic. Congratulations to everyone on the drama team. Uh, the uh, the band was of course fantastic. Um, the songs were great, the sets were great, so the theater's still being put to good use, Jeff. It looks uh fantastic. Everyone had a great time. Um, I also got, this was very um impactful, obviously, to go to the um Future Ready um presentation at Early College. Um, I'm sure Lisa and Carol will tell you more about that, but the rock garden, you might have seen it on the newsletter that just went out. Um, the rock garden that the students make that has the inspirational sayings on it, that they plant around a tree. Dr. Martinez showed us where he wants to grow the rock garden into a bigger circle around the tree so that there's more um sayings that, you know, more of the rocks can be painted. Um, there's a table outside of the classrooms that's put up um once or twice a week uh that the students can go out and paint those rocks. And it's just, it was just striking how um, what a good feeling that can create on campus for students and what an amazing thing to walk by and see what all of your friends and your um, you know, possibly even teachers, counselors, whoever can paint a rock and put that saying um in that circle and it, that, those expressions of hope. Um, and, you know, what the future may hold were really inspirational. So that was great. Um, I think Wes and I got a little teary-eyed, but maybe just me. And um, and then uh obviously, I was very excited to be invited to the Killey Brook uh playground opening, the pre, pre, the preschool um TK playground. And it was so amazing. Um, again, Jeff and everyone who made that, those playgrounds look so fantastic. Um, there was so many parents there. The kids all came out in um yellow hard hats. The preschoolers and the TKers in yellow hard hats, nothing cuter in the whole wide world. Um, just waiting there, it was like a Mervens commercial, open, 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 where they were trying to like get into the playground. If anyone remembers Mervens commercial. And they were, I mean, they just, when we cut the ribbon, I mean, they just flew into that place, uh as they should, as preschoolers and TKers should. So, um but the joy on their face, faces was fantastic. Parents were thrilled. And so thank you to everyone who made that possible too. That was amazing. Um, and I think, I think that's it. I think I'm done.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. Trustee Pearson?
There was so much going on this month. Um, some of my, some of the highlights um was the Student Advisory Council that Wes does here. Um, it's so great to get the input. Nothing better than to get the input from the students. Um, and to see how our superintendent listens and takes in that input uh and actually puts it to action, which is so great to see. Um, another one of my favorites is the Newport Beach Police Department, how they show up at the schools to do coffee with the parents and the students. Um, it's cute. They do it so that the students get comfortable asking for help from police. But as I was sitting at the Harbor View, at the, yeah, Harbor View um morning, there must have been twenty kids on top of a SWAT car, and the police were white and looked at me and went, do you think the parents are mad? And I'm looking at them, like, you're the policeman. Like, you are the policeman. So I think our police are getting just as much out of it as the, as the students. They're getting used to the students as well. So that was kind of a fun, fun thing to watch um go down. Uh, the OC Teacher of the Year, of course, was just an amazing event. Um, twenty-five thousand dollars for the top six um teachers, which I think is amazing and wonderful. Um, a, a wonderful event. Dancing with the teachers at CDM. I don't think there is anything I'd be more scared of than to dance in front of a bunch of high school students. And these teachers stay until late, practice, and um put on this event. And it, I mean, I've never laughed hard, I've never had more fun than that event. So I, that was my first one, which I thought was amazing. And, and the other thing, the thing that made me cry this month was the Veterans Day event um at Harbor View. I don't think there's anything more wonderful than seeing a whole school waving the flags um with the veterans and thanking the veterans. Um, and the principal, Lampert, his dad was actually one of the veterans too that they honored. So it was a very special, it was a very special event.
Um, yes, I also wanna say thank you, Mr. Jeff Trader, um for specifically Item Eighteen A Eight that we kind of skipped over, but it's a big one. Thank you for the shade structures and the playgrounds and the restrooms for, I think it's like eight or nine schools. I'm really excited to see all of those facilities and the long, long-awaited maintenance updates. So thank you so much. Um, we're looking forward to those that continue to roll out, but thank you for that. Um, I also attended the Little Mermaid production at Mesa, um which was actually, I, was the understudy performance, and they were really incredible considering they were the understudies. I wouldn't have, if someone hadn't told me, I wouldn't have known that. Um, it was really amazing to see the set specifically. I'm very excited for Estancia to open up and have the same experience. Um, and one of the things too, I think just going back to looking through and following um more closely along with um things that impact our classified staff um as uh my day job in working in, having um, leading the Orange County Eviction Diversion Collaborative for the last year and getting really familiar with what is coming, um what are, what is the reality for a lot of people who are working in our community and the needs for housing and the costs that continue to rise. Um, eighty-eight thousand is now low income in Orange County, and every single year it continues to rise. Um, and so just making sure that we continue to have a lo- a livable wage for our staff that are working full-time at our schools is something that I think is really important, and that we're gonna maybe have to continue to find new and creative ways, like maybe a housing stipend or something because um it's six thousand dollars to rent a three-bedroom house right now in Costa Mesa, and that's more than most people's mortgages. Um, and on happier note, um I was able to participate in um Lover Schools Day, which it's wonderful to now see the Community Partnerships Department and all of those relationships start to um blossom now. I think in our second year of having that. Um, and just continued involvement and support also to far school sites and the staff, having parents and community members come alongside and support them with little projects and new paint, new flowers, that kind of thing. So, thank you.
Thank you. You know, it's, it's important when you're out there and around the district and showing, showing the support and also getting the pulse of the community. So thank you all trustees for doing that. So, um, been busy. Uh, first of all, I want to congratulate uh the four over here who came out winners in our election. And I think um as far as the, the three of us here to my, the two of us, two to my left and myself, I think it shows that the, the people have spoken, that they wanted the incumbents back, and that's kind of nice. It's a nice vote of confidence because it shows that our, our trajectory is on, is in the right direction. So um, congratulations. And then, of course, Trustee Barto, we're going to miss your talent on the, on the board, but I know that you're gonna take it somewhere else and do great things there too. So thank you for your service. Uh, what, six years? Six years. So thank you for being a, a servant of the public in the name of kids. Um, we have been busy. So um East Bluff Elementary had the, the cutest event. Um, it's a lip sync contest that they do at Flag Deck. And then it's a lot of fun because all the kids are just build the confidence to be, you know, performing in front of their, their, their community parents and teachers and, of course, the students. And then um one of the highlights was the surprise appearance of Justin Bieber, um who was actually Mister, Mister Circe, a first-grade teacher. And he was so good. It was crazy. He sang Bye Bye Bye. I think that's a Bieber song, right? One Direction. He sang some sort of Bieber song, I don't know. That's, that's insane. But no, he didn't sing that. But he sang a Bieber song. I know it is, I just don't know which one. So, I could play you the video if you would like. And then at one point, um Principal Abby came out and she was right there doing it as well. It's just really a cute uh community uh building moment. And I'm looking forward to attending on Friday the Playground Dedication at East Bluff Elementary of the Rolls Royce Playgrounds that we are rolling out at every campus. They're beautiful. The kids are so excited. Even the upper graders are excited about the lower grade, uh the little playgrounds. It's like, that should tell you something. We are, let's see, CDM went to the Middle School Theater Production Show of Hands. It's incredible what um Hannah Lind does in the program there at, at CDM. Um, just wonderful talent, and it was just great to see the kids once again gaining confidence on stage and having the presence to just be, um, you know, just uh performers. So, great skills. And our boys cross-country team came in first in the CIF prelims at Mount SAC. And so this coming weekend, they will be in the finals. So they're really doing um an amazing job. So I'm hoping that, wishing them luck. Um, and our girls, the CDM girls CI, won CIF in their division. So looking forward to seeing them at the Board Room soon. Same with the Water Polo Team, Open Division. My gosh, amazing. And I went to the D-LAC meeting briefly to, to welcome, you know, just to say hi to the parents. And it's, it's amazing how many families, how many representatives of our community do come to D-LAC. It's, it's, it's amazing. And I just love the fact that there's so much engagement. So whoever's doing it, keep doing the great job in engaging the community and bringing everyone together um for our EL community. And last, uh the Newport Mesa Schools Foundation is going to um launch their teacher grant program for twenty twenty-five, and the application comes live on December first. And it's, I believe the deadline is January twenty-fourth. There's a lot of money on the table, so teachers, please apply. Um, all grades, there's individual teacher awards up to fifteen hundred dollars. And then at the elementary and secondary grade level, it's uh up to five thousand dollars. If you're a department or a grade level, you can get up to a five thousand dollar grant. So applications, again, twelve one, and deadline is January twenty-fourth. So thank you Newport Mesa Schools Foundation for doing the work. And also, they sponsor the uh State of the Schools Breakfast, along with our PIO office and AVA office. So, thank you. On that note, um, meeting is adjourned, seven twenty-nine.